I'd like to call this board with Council meeting of October 20th, 2020 to work. We'll begin with a pledge to the flag followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in every way, without any doubt. Welcome all.
President Weber.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarson.
President.
Councilman Anthony.
President.
Councilwoman Luthen.
Here.
Councilman Tillman.
Here.
Councilman Whitcomb.
Here.
Mayor Riddick.
Here.
Closer calling.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Ian C. Wardle.
Here.
Manager Zerinsky.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer.
Here.
To the floor.
Thank you very much. Under the question, we have two open here from the Joseph P. Simpson Library for the annual update.
Good evening everyone. If you could be here over a little later in the calendar year than normal, but this is not been a normal year for anyone. So I am celebrating my 24th anniversary with the library that happened over the summer. And despite the number of years and how long that seems, it doesn't feel that long. So I'm happy to be here to give you a brief update tonight. So we closed on March 14th. We were closed for three months. And had to quickly figure out what to do and how to do it safely. So we reopened on June 11th. So we've now been open for four months. And it is wonderful to be open again and to be in the building and to be in my office and to see people coming in. It is not the same, but it is better than the alternative of being closed completely. So we do have people coming in. Most of the services are back in place. Capacity limits on programs based on room size. The toys and the children's department are not out because of trying to keep them clean. But the computers are in use. The books are available. So in the scheme of things, we're doing alright. So part of the reason for our visit each year is to thank you for the support that you provide to us financially and your in-kind services that we also receive. This has been a tough year for nonprofits. In finishing my budget projection today for the end of the year, I think we're going to end in good shape. We do receive a paycheck protection loan, which is a huge help for anyone who received one this year. And so we're going to work on the forgiveness paperwork for that. But your support is important to continue. We don't quite have a quick picture of what next year looks like yet financially. We do not know what our state funding is for next year yet. We know that five months out of twelve are level funding, which is great for us. We're advocating for level funding for the remaining seven months, but don't anticipate that the state will pass the second part of their budget until after the election. So we're putting our budget together for next year, not really knowing what that number is going to be. Some of the things we did over the summer were to take our Storytime programs to the park, which really turned out to be a nice service for us. And the people who came out seemed to enjoy it. We want to see if there's a way we can continue that in a regular year next year. So we thank you for the use in Memorial Park for some of our programs. And we also do come at Fisher Park in Upper Allen. We have resumed some of our children's programs in person at the library. Doing, still doing some things via Zoom and doing a number of the adult programs via Zoom as well. So the handout you have tonight just kind of summarizes some of the programs that we offer, what we did while we were closed or in the reopening phase and which ones are back in the building. One of the big services we've done, which are currently on hold, are the visits to daycare and preschool centers. We would typically go to about 14 locations each month and visit a number of different classes. Right now they are not desiring outside visitors, which we totally understand. So there's two places that we're able to go in and do our Storytime lessons. And they're also affiliated with the school district and their pre-K count enrichment programs. And we're part of that project, which is why we can go in and do that. So we look forward to being able to resume that when the summers are ready for us. So one of the new things that we got in the last few months is a database called tutor.com. So anyone who has kids in school or grandchildren in school, this is a wonderful resource available for students and for parents to get some tutoring assistance for free in all kinds of subjects and all kinds of grade levels. You do need a library card to have access to database. It is available from 12 noon to 12 midnight. And the instructions on how to access it are on your sheet. So we thank you for the support you provide to the library. We hope you feel that we are providing a valuable service back to you. I did want to say a special thank you to Chief Gary Maff and Chief Conan Hinch, who spent a morning at the library at the end of September. And it was a very enlightening and educational morning. We did our fire extinguisher simulation training, but we also did some fire drills. And I think the staff who participated in it will remember the things that did not go well. And thankfully, it was a drill. And, but they were both great resources and very patient with asking, answering a lot of questions that the staff had. And it was a good use of our time being closed, which I hate being closed. But it was definitely worth it. So thank you to both of them for their time that day. Anyone have any questions for me?
This program on the tutor is a great add-on. It's really going to help the kids who are struggling to learn because of the online stuff. How is that funded?
The let comes out of the library system's budget.
It's pretty program.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm on my way back to the library board meeting tonight, so I'm not going to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Alright, citizens' comments or requests? Are there any citizens' comments or requests?
In seeing, I'm going to move on to correspondence, Mr. Zerinsky. I have a few with, actually one piece of course on it. We received this Friday in the mail, actually through email. Passway area transportation study, a regret and a formulary that South Mountain Charlie Greenway face two piece bill of study has not been selected for funding through regional transportation, planning, and station grant program. This was the grant money that we're going to use as a match for the big grant. So they were not, Hatch did not pick their project up to use as a, to award a grant. So I have to reach out to David and see what the next steps are as far as that goes. They apparently were informed of this before the letters, after the official letters went out. So he's aware of it, but I'm not, we didn't talk about what the next steps would be.
They didn't get the tourism grant either.
Some of the stuff is going directly to them. Other stuff is coming directly to us. This one was actually emailed to me. Actually, it came Monday, yesterday. It was wanting to meet. So that is all I have to respond to, sir.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council of October 6th, 2020. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second from Mr. Anthony. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none.
Unless I hear any different response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. Board boards liaisons, first of all, the environmental advisory council, Mr. Booker.
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we toured the COVID hard natural playground to kind of view the progress of the project. And it was outstanding. I was very happy to see how far we've come. And as a, the environmental advisory council, they kind of discussed a to-do slash wish list, a wish list. And yeah, I was very excited to walk around and yeah, we're excited for the progress to be made for the end of the year here.
Very good. Any questions with Mr. Booker? Okay, hearing none, Joe will let you go on with the Harvard report.
Yeah, so at the Harvard meeting in earlier this month, we discussed the processes for getting the Harvard awards selected. So we're taking a look at potential houses that may be awarded. And then our, I think we should talk about it in the action items today, but we discussed the certificate of appropriateness for Michael and Amy Maitland of 1-2-3 South Park Street. I'll say my, what they said, built it.
Okay. Very good. Anything else from Mr. Booker? Okay, now we'll move on. Let me review, Mr. Miller.
We're working on a review of that.
And Mr. Miller, the municipal authority.
Municipal authority met last night. And we discussed some other things. We decided, we made a decision on improvements to the sewer unit that runs through the cemetery. So that line will be in place for basements. We discussed with our engineer, HRG, the project to sewer properties on Simpson Street, not believing that we do not have public sewer. So we discussed not planning and the options involved. And there was no action, but we're going to keep that on our radar moving forward. And we started our budget discussion. So those were the major takeaways to the last one.
Any questions to Mr. Miller? Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move, thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll move on to the planning commission, Mr. Pelman.
Well, there was no planning commission meeting in September, and there will not be one this month either, so I have no report. Thank you, sir.
Preparation board, Mrs. Agarson.
So we have several action items on the agenda regarding the pool and the joint recup他还ments that we'll discuss further on. We also did discuss, it is the 100th anniversary of soldiers and allies. So we're getting together committees, which downtown partnership has agreed to partner with for community dates that we can piggyback off of one of them coming up in August. So those dates will be, so now for anyone that wants to join that committee in the future. And I, and then we will be meeting on the 10th of November. So the committee will meet before our meeting to have a pre-discussion about a comprehensive plan with the rec board. So we're excited. Thank you, Councilman Pelman and Councilman Booker for agreeing to meet with them.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Agarson? Hearing none, we'll move on to the shade tree commission, Mr. Booker.
The shade tree commission did not meet this month due to a lack of members. So if you know anybody that's interested in keeping alive our historic tree canopy in the borough, let me know. We'll get them on there.
Very good. Thank you. School board report, I have no report at this time. So we move on to the manager's report.
Okay, a couple of things here to discuss. The tree removal started in the park today. I talked to the guy that was putting it on the ground is the company that's doing it. Went out and made some requests based on the EAC's meeting the other night for some materials at the natural playground. You're going to see probably some logs laying around that are about 15 feet long. They're going to be transported from Memorial Park to COVID Park to be used for some of the amenities out there. Everything is laid out at my, at COVID Park for the installation. I'm hoping to have that, at least the main part of that done by the end of month. There's going to be at least one or maybe two days that I'm going to be out there working with the guys with the bricks together. And then once that's done, they should be able to finish that up with no time. One of the other things in the park is due to the excess amount of material on the compost site. We were taking some of the compost and spreading it under the pine trees out on the point. If anybody doesn't know where that's at, that's out on the football field. They've got most of that area covered with mulch, probably six inches to a foot thick all through there. If you see any steam coming up, it is steamed. It is not smoked. They dumped the truckload out there today when I was out and I had room to check and make sure it was not smoked. So we're meeting that down speaking of compost site. Friday morning at 7:00 AM, I had a Zoom meeting with Silver Spring Township. This is our annual meeting with them to discuss our situation at the compost site. There's a couple of things that I think Councilman Weber, Glenda, Barbara Irland has the recycling coordinator. I have Max and Curtis also on that. And I included the county recycling coordinator, Jeremy. Justin Miller. So I keep wanting to call him Jeremy. But I've been back and forth with both Teresa Everly and Ray Palmer, the assistant township manager at Silver Springs. Three fires in two weeks is a little excessive. Plus, they're out there grinding now. There's a pile on there grinding that is easily five times bigger than the one that keeps catching on fire. So we've got to do something with this. I will come back to council at the first meeting in November with recommendations. One of the big recommendations I want to do is no contractors. That is being a big problem. Max called me the other morning and says that there was five trucks went through on one cart slate the other morning and dumped all the brush and stuff from trees. Our guy that's doing the trees in the park, he doesn't have a compost site. He has other places he takes and dumps his chippings and stuff. So there's contractors out there that's finding other places to do it. This is, this was always intended to be a citizen's service, not something for the contractor to utilize and take advantage of. They're not taking anything off the site. They're only bringing stuff to us. That's where the major problem is coming in. We're permitted on that site at 5,000 cubic yards. Curtis and I have an estimate that we're around 15,000 cubic yards of material on that site. So it's way overloaded. Justin is saying there's potential that they could come in and have us re-permitted. We may have to go through the re-permitting process for that site because of the amount of material that's on. So Silver Springs has got to start recognizing this problem out there. To have, our guy is working for a day and a half pulling them off and everything else just to extinguish fires and having two fire companies out there for six and a half hours trying to put out a compost fire is damn ridiculous. So it's a waste of resources and a waste of time. For a $10 compost pass, this is, it's not paying off. So that's, that's a big issue to talk about.
I may add to that, the, the guy from the county, Mr. Miller of the county.
Yes.
His report was, was very, very good. And very, it really did address the issues that Roger is bringing up. And it was, it's nice to know that the county is going to support Roger and us when we meet on, on Friday morning. So there's a little more weight to it. Just, I recall the earlier discussions when we didn't know whether we should open the plant, the recycling area back when COVID hit. And how vehemently they argued for putting, allowing contractors to come in against our better judgment. So hopefully we'll come to some agreement on this. So I appreciate your efforts and reaching out to the county and getting some, getting some backing from the little higher up.
So we've also been trying and not succeeding in getting other people to come in and take some of the material off the site. And that's why we decided to start spreading as much as we could. They've been running trucks yesterday and today out to the point to try and spread that around. We're going to, at the natural playground, we're probably going to have probably a good, maybe six, eight, maybe 10 trucks of mulch that we're going to spread out there in one play area. There's, there's opportunities to use some of the stuff up, but we're not going to be able to use all of that. I mean, I called Legacy Park to see if they would want some because they have to do a maintenance soil in the basements. And therefore, they've got all they need right now until they start laying it around on some of the other phases, they're not going to need any. So we're kind of stuck with this out there. And if you go out and see it, I can't see past the pile with the cameras. And the camera's mounted on the building, the boiler building, the press building. That's how high the pile is. The machine is, as a big chute comes up, it's probably 20 feet in the air. The pile is actually blocking that. I can't see the end of the machine. I didn't want them, Silver Springs to agree to close it while they were grinding because of the amount of, they let, we, yeah. The not having enough space on the site for residents to be in there grinding around while they're trying to grind, plus moving the heavy equipment around. Silver Springs said, no, it needs to stay open. So it got to the point that Silver Springs wasn't, was telling their residents to call us and tell us to open the site. And that was just, they weren't taking the calls themselves. They were just sending them directly over here.
Roger, is there a way to encourage contractors to pick up mulch or they don't need it this time of the year?
They don't need it this time of year. Some of them need it this time of year, others don't. But our mulch is not necessarily treated. So it is processed. It is heated. Everything should be dead that's in there that, you know. I mean, it gets to the point where it catches on fire. I had some really cool pictures to show, but we'll show them another time.
Do you think if we put it out on Facebook, I don't know if enough people in the borough would need mulch, but would that help if everyone came over, got a scooper out there and filled up people's trucks?
Well, they want to try that too. I think the, we start loading trucks, that's going to be a problem. I think, you know, it's always then you come and you fill up. We tried ticketing one time, you know, bring in a ticket and they fill you up. The problem with it is people don't respect the closing time. They show up when it's time to close. Then we end up paying somebody over time to stay and load trucks. So it's just gotten to the point where there's too much stuff being brought in, not enough stuff being taken away. We're trying to do leaves now and we're, we're seriously running out of room out there. It is getting to the point where it's dangerous. So Curtis, Curtis will attest to that. Justin has been down. He's looked at it. You know, he knows what's on the site. He was actually down to measurements and stuff. And that's part of what he did in the report. We are one of the only ones on the west shore that is open six days a week. I did hear them to agree to close Sunday. But we're, most of them are only open three, two, three days a week for a certain amount of hours. And they don't allow contractors. We're one of the only ones that allow contractors. But where else can they go and dump, you know, a whole year for $1,500? That's, that's a, that's a, that's a deal. Plus, they can take scoop after scoop of mulch and sell it to the resident of the homeowner for $200, you know, a square yard. So, and it's free for them. But they're not taking it. That's the big problem. So that, I'll give everyone, council will get an update on that. The work on the pavilions started yesterday. They ran into, I'm going to have, I'm going to actually, I did tell them to proceed with this. There was an addition to the work. All wood, most of the wood on the pavilion roof is rotted. It is, they're estimating a minimum of 50 to 60 years old, the wood that's up there. It looks like some of the stuff that you guys used at the, at the museum. That's how it's all put together. They're going over top of it with plywood. There was an additional cost of $4,800 for materials and for them to do this. But it wouldn't do any good to put the roof on there if they put it on top of the rotten wood. So.
That's a bad way.
Yeah. And we have the money for this. I told them to proceed because I need, we need to get it done before winter.
What else do I get? And you should run my ad. As I recall, the motion that we did with council for that project was that we would leave open if necessary any additional things.
We would leave some bad spots in there. It's, it's pretty extensive. We're actually reshooting the entire roof. And that's really not a bad part for that. So. For the amount of work. And they're doing a great job. I was over watching them a little bit today. Yeah, they, they hope to be finished by the end of the week. So. The sweep sweeping is going really well. Max is actually out most days. We have Tank Girl has been trained on how to use it in case, Tank Girl is what we call her. Caitlin Saldo is one of the receptionists. She's, she's, she was actually in the military and drove tanks. So.
Oh.
But thanks to the other application, that's why she's back. I'm sorry, guys. She's actually doing really well. The gentleman from New Jersey that was, did the training, said she was fine. She, he was here for one day, did the training with Max and her and turned him loose and let him go. So she comes out every once in a while. But she's hit back up at this point in time until my other gentleman from the highway garage gets back. So it's going well. He's frustrated with the fact that he's getting behind, but they always run behind. We tried to reassure him that. He has taken, today himself, he's taken over 10 loads of leaves to the compost site just today. So he's, he's doing really well. He's doing a pretty good job. Most people, the problem with it is people put sticks and bricks and rocks out there too. But this thing will pick up a brick. We found out the hard way. So. Makes a lot of noise going there, but it, it makes, so the last, one of the, I have two more things. Tank removal testing is starting tomorrow at the highway garage. They'll be able to do the testing. They're also going to do the inventory of chemical storage and everything else because when DAP comes in to do any testing on the site, they're going to do an inspection in the entire site. So they're going to get through all the buildings. They're going to do the site testing as far as voiding as well to see we are good at prep for that and go from there. The last one is the B and Z pressure up. I want to bring this up to council's attention. Chief and I have been had discussions. We've also discussed with Darrell Westy about this project, this situation. We are not getting any kind of permits from PennDOT as far as we're under emergency services to close roads or emergency conditions to close roads. This is what happened with June 1st. It has happened with the Streets of Treats. This happened with the parade. The state, PennDOT is not issuing road codes. So there were a couple of ideas that we've kicked around. I don't think anything, there's been a few things that we've discussed. I think there's some stuff that we need to talk about in more detail on that. And then we'll have Darrell adjust his, his special events permit that has already been approved. That's my manager's report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. September 18th, attended a national honor guard academy graduation held at the New Kingston Firehouse. Mechanicsburg Lieutenant Brian Curtis was the class speaker. There were 31 participating EMTs, fire, and police from three counties. The 18th Mechanicsburg Veterans held a MIAPOW recognition event at the square. A MIAPOW table was set up and explained. September 20th, three eagle citations of peace to the city were delivered to St. Joseph's Boy Scout Troop Number 190. The 17th Streets of Treats was very successful, enjoyed by parents and kids, great weather. Crime watch is in a coronavirus limbo right now. Trivia question. In 1858, wooden boxes marked "Bibles" were shipped by rail through Mechanicsburg to Chambersburg. What was shipped from where? What was the final destination and why? I don't really expect an answer to that one, but this is the answer to that. Sharps, rifles, and pipe poles were offloaded in Chambersburg, destination Harpers Ferry, to John Brown's band of abolitionists who were shipped by roping ringling businessmen. Question was courtesy of Mechanicsburg Museum of. Question was courtesy of Mechanicsburg Museum Association.
Can you refer, thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, the police report.
Sorry, don't have anything.
Thank you. Solicitors' report.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President, I reviewed the two agreements that are action items, uh, before, uh, the council this evening without objection. Is, uh, as far as the short service is concerned, is the joint rack agreement and then the addendum amendment to the, the pool agreement. End of report.
Thank you very much. If I could add to that.
Oh, yes.
Uh, I was, I had a meeting with Lisa on Friday, um, to discuss, uh, she came in and was surprised that she came in, uh, every once in a while we get a visit, but I wasn't expecting that. She usually calls and tells me she's coming, but, um, it's lucky you caught me in here Friday morning. Uh, she handed me a notification, I sent this out to council announcing her resignation, uh, from council solicitorship. Um, I think she's been presented a, a very good opportunity for herself professionally, and, um, it's gonna unfortunately take her away from the time she has to contribute to the borough of Mechanicsburg. Um, I did not include that in your packets because I wanted that to be, I, I felt that was very impersonal. I, the service that she's done for ten-plus years for the Borough of Mechanicsburg, I think needed something a little more than just send it out in the packets, so, um, it is with regret that I will ask to add to the agenda the acceptance of her resignation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, solicitor point.
Bar Chief report.
And I don't see him, so we'll move on to the E M C report. Well, it's nice to see you in person, good evening.
I have received information from FEMA that the initial submission to them for reimbursement has been obligated. And obligated means that the funding has been attached, and it will be sent to FEMA soon, and they will approve it, and we will get seventy-five percent of the funding. The amount that's being obligated is five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and three cents. My joke to my wife is I paid for myself this year. Um, the other amounts are not included, this would be the sick time and the take leave for staff. Uh, in a conversation with FEMA, I was told it is going to be highly unlikely that we receive reimbursement for these simply because, uh, they are considered costs that the borough would have had to incur regardless of COVID. Um, and, not necessarily regardless of COVID, but would have had to occur, would have had to, uh, would have had if anybody was sick, whether it was from COVID. And I believe that somebody would have to actually have the virus, not necessarily be out because they were average. So, I am still working to try to receive reimbursement on that. Obviously, that is a large chunk of, uh, what I had calculated with Roger, with Gary, and with Chief Myers, um, probably around fifty thousand dollars. So, I am going to continue to work on that. FEMA is supposed to be sending out an updated slide deck about how to do an amended project. The problem is when applying for our FEMA reimbursement, it is not clear. Uh, there is no option for staff costs, and so I made a little assistance from FEMA on that, and they weren't overly helpful the first time around, which is unfortunate considering I work out of their building nowadays. Um, anyways, I'm gonna try to do that, but I, I have a lot of doubt that we're gonna get anything further. Um, as far as the COVID update, which is why my report was sent today, as of today, there are under eighty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-two cases statewide, and eight thousand five hundred thirty-three deaths. In Cumberland County, two thousand three hundred forty-nine total cases and seventy-eight deaths. The, uh, alarming part of that is today we have ninety-five new cases, which is the highest number of cases Cumberland County has seen since the beginning of the pandemic. Nearly five hundred other cases and almost all the deaths have occurred, have occurred in long-term care facilities in Cumberland County. Uh, of the seventy deaths, seventy-six of them have been in long-term care facilities. In the seventh, in the month of zero five five, zit code, three hundred fifty-four positive cases and six thousand seven hundred, or six thousand seventy-six negative cases, which is a percent positivity of five point five percent, which is down, uh, from six percent in September. I will note that of the ninety-five cases today, seventy-four of them were in the one seven zero five zero zit code. Um, and they, they are not associated with a long-term care facility, so I don't know what that, what caused that. Uh, the center will actually be known to be asked if I had any inside information that I could share with them. I have no information at all to share with them, or with you, um, or even that I know that I can't tell you. But that's certainly alarming, that seventy-four of the ninety-five cases came from one zit code. Uh, the county is doing better than the rest of the state, percent positivity is at four point zero percent, while the state's at four point three, and there's twenty-one of the sixty-seven counties that have percent positivities that are above five point oh. However, the, um, incidence rate, which is the number of new cases in the past seven days per a hundred thousand residents, is above fifty, it's at fifty-six point one, which is concerning. Hospitals continue to have widespread availability. Every animal flu season note is even more important for everybody to take the, take the mitigation steps that have been discussed for months on end. Uh, wear a mask when you're coming in contact with somebody who's not a resident of your household, maintain social distancing, wash your hands, and if you're sick, stay home. There's also the COVID Alert P A app, which has three hundred and thirty thousand downloads, um, which is another way, uh, to assist in the contact tracing process. Uh, it, it is becoming very difficult for the people, even with the people we've hired, to get through the contact tracing process with the number of cases we have. It is, uh, usually about an hour, um, discussion to go through that, uh, first the case investigation and the contact tracing. So, it is a challenge as we see increasing cases to do that. So, the app is possible in that way, um, because the, the key part of the app for anybody who has it is if you're in a grocery store and you're in line for fifteen minutes, or you're waiting to vote and you're in line for fifteen minutes, and you don't know the person who's standing in front of you, and they text positive, you are then being notified, um, without having to know the people you came in contact with. So, that is my report.
Wow, that was a lot of report. All right, we move on. Are there any additions to the agenda? Yes, sir, I have two additions to the agenda at this time. Discussion possible action to advertise the anti-nepotism ordinance using option two, and discussion possible action with regret to accept the resignation of solicitor point.
We will need a motion. Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarson. Any discussion?
I, I just read the, the recreation board, and they also recommend that we appoint Councilman Agarson to the joint rec board. Should we have that number separate agenda, I don't, for an appointment?
We probably should, so.
If we accept it, if, if we accept the joint rec.
If we accept it, so long as we can add it to the, at that point, we can amend the motion, correct?
Well, if, I would.
Commander.
So, if we take action with regard to the agreement, and a separate action would be to appoint, I wouldn't combine the two in one action item.
They recommended that, that Ms. Agarson be appointed to that, um, the way that the, it was written, um, it was taken out that someone from the rec board would be representing the Borough of Mechanicsburg on there. It would be a council person, so, um, yeah, and they recommended, since she sits on the rec board or is the liaison to the rec board, they recommend Sarah do that.
Solicitor point, is it necessary for us to have a motion to approve that, or can she just be appointed?
I think you're just appointing, that is, that would be at the, at the call of the chair, uh, for an appointment to.
You are duly appointed. Let's, let's pass it, let's pass the agreement first. Time to approve, uh, who's the appointed, please? If we need agreement, agreement. So, hearing no other discussion, uh, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. And approval of the agenda. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Go ahead, hear a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Siskowski, action items.
Action items before council on October twentieth, twenty twenty. Discussion possible action on the certificate of appropriateness for Michael and Annie Mayland of one-two-three South Market Street for window and door replacement.
Yeah, so at the, uh, Hart meeting, uh, we discussed the, uh, appropriateness for, uh, of the replacement windows and doors, and, uh, after discussion and review, uh, Hart recommended to, uh, award the certificate of appropriateness for Michael and Annie Mayland, uh, one-two-three South Market Street for the window and door replacement. Uh, if you look in your Hart notes to, um, the style of door and window that were chosen to, um, to replace the existing, uh, were color and everything are matched as closely as possible, um, to keep that same look, but get the modern, um, technologies for like, uh, R value and stuff like that, so.
Salute. All right, thank you, Mr. Anthony. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. Motion tags, next item. Discussion and possible action on the joint pool agreement. This is the pool, this is the agreement we have with Upper Allen Township for the fifty thousand dollars, uh, per year for their residents. This came about, this was actually to amend that, to add a year without payment because they paid us for this year, but the pool wasn't open, so. This was offered by their solicitor at Upper Allen, don't make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Is our second.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion?
Uh, isn't that, um, amendment, uh, it says fifty thousand dollars for twenty years? Uh, so that, that value never changes even with like inflation and stuff?
Correct. That was, it was negotiated as a million dollar deal over twenty years.
And we're en, nearing the end of that.
We are almost to the end of that, and I think there's three, there's two more years of them paying, but there's three years that will give their residents reduced rates, their resident rates to get into the pool.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And motion carries. Next item.
Discussion possible action to approve the salary and the pool rates for the twenty-twenty-one pool season. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb.
I'll.
I think I heard Mrs. Agarson first, one of the second. Uh, any, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And motion carries. Next item, please. Discussion possible action on the joint recreation agreement. Do I have your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarson. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions. In the one section it says, um, one second, section four, number one, it says, and this is probably ill-picking, but I'm just curious. Uh, within governing body of each member, uh, of the member title shall approve the addition for the corresponding adjustment to the contribution detailed in section five, number. It doesn't feel like we have an option to turn it down, it says that we all must vote on it if it's approved. The one part of that reads, if the committee recommends additional full-time personnel to s, to support the operation of the Mechanicsburg Area Parks and Recreation, then the governing body of each of the member entities shall approve the addition and a corresponding adjustment to their contributions detailed in section five. So, if the board agrees that we need, that they need to add somebody, we must approve it?
No, no, um, that is for the playground program personnel. If they decide that they need more personnel for that, uh, then it would come to council to agree to approve that because of expenditure funds on the park. Uh, we pay for certain members, like, um, the daycare program that they run at the, at Koser over the summer. That is for those personnel. We would have the option of doing that. If we, if council were to choose not to fund that position, they would have to move those kids to another facility if they were over, over, um.
I guess I said it should be shall, so as long as the solicitor's okay with it, I guess it would be.
Shall versus may.
Right. Upper Allen insisted that a lot of the stuff come back to the full body of the elected officials to, uh, and, I mean, rightly so.
Yeah, it's time we're spending more money on this community.
Yep, and that was part of the, the, what, um, Sarah and, and Gary and myself, uh, when we had the initial meeting with this, we wanted that specifically, that council would be the ones making the final call on that. This board, we initially set out to have this board be an advisory board. Um, Upper Allen did not want that, the school necessarily did not want that. Um, the main theme that we kept going at is this is a school, this is a district project, this is not a borough. You know, we shouldn't be back and forth and everything else on that. Uh, but this is one of those, that's one of those ones where we wanted that, we wanted to have the, the council or the commissioners have a final say on it.
I'm with you. So, the next question I have is about, we're paying a little bit higher percentage than Upper Allen is as a release to our population, not much, but a little bit. But we're now tying the, an increase to that every year to act one, which is roughly three percent this year? It has been between two and a half and three percent every year, and so we're gonna see an increase in this cost every year going forward about that much.
Yeah, they, it was tied to the census numbers, to the, the actual population of the, the municipality. Um, one of the things that we wanted done was because of, people, the, the township is actually growing in population, we're getting smaller from the township, uh, we're getting a smaller population represented in the school district. Uh, we wanted to address on that, that basis, and that's what, uh, Greg Longwell and, um, and, uh, Mark Lady and a few of the other ones decided that would be the best way to do it. They have a yearly total of where the kids are coming from. Instead of waiting every ten years for the census, uh, they can have that, that adjusted yearly.
So, this is tied to the number of kids in the school district from each municipality?
Correct.
Yes. And it's going to be adjusted annually?
It could be adjusted annually, um, that's something that I think that, that was still kinda up in the air a little bit between, uh, the school district and the three other municipalities that were involved in it.
And we also want the option to end this agreement at any time.
Yes.
Yeah, which is.
We don't wanna do that if we don't have to.
Yeah.
Right, you know, I'm just living in our cost, that's all.
But I believe, if I'm not, or maybe I'm mistaken, but I think our, our contribution is actually a little lower.
It is slightly lower, um, the playground, they, they, they did put the playground in there. Um, Upper Allen tried to tie in the pool management agreement into that, and I, they, they backed off of that real quick when I told them, okay, that's the, that's it, that's our contribution to this program. Now, the other thing we tried to do is try to get them to, to say that this is a contribution to the program. Um, it's not a fee.
Rather than a fee.
So, and they, they kind of agreed to that, I mean, which is how the school looked at it. This is our contribution to help that program continue, uh, because technically the money's all coming out of the same pocket. I mean, our tax payer who's paying it, and, you know, whether they're gonna pay it through the school, one of the two, so.
So, I apologize, I have another question, I don't want to apologize for that, but I have another question. It's tied to the, um, so it looks like if there's a net, a net income or a net loss we're talking about, I was already thinking, explain that to me. It's, it's a little unclear for me.
Okay, I, I can maybe shed a little bit light on that. This is one of the things that Upper Allen really pushed for.
Okay.
That if, if the, the rec department made a profit, that, that profit should be shared with the, the entities.
Correct.
But what they failed to realize is if there's a loss, then that, then that would have to be shared too. So, the discussion was to give the option to each community as to whether or not they wanted to enter into that part of the agreement, about the profit and loss. So, our, our stance, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I know, is that we do not wanna do that. Our contribution is our contribution, and let it go with that, because we're, they're, we would be at their. Essentially, what happens is there is no profit and loss, there never has been. But Upper Allen seemed to think that they were being short-changed for some reason or other. That would have prompted that, Sean.
Historically, with the information that Greg Longwell provided to all of us, uh, this program has either broken even or run the nade. Um, and one of the big, why we did not want anything in there discussing profit and losses, their budget season is different than ours, so they would be coming to us in May. their budget season is different than ours. So, they would be coming to us in May, June, and saying, here's your eleven thousand dollar bill because we ran into loss. And we don't have a budget. So, you know, as tight as we run our budget here, one of the things that, that the council representatives and I specifically spoke to is we don't want any part of profit or loss. They haven't shown a profit in ten or twelve years. They've either broken even or ran behind. So, I don't think we were losing anything by not, by opting out of that.
No, I think that's a great decision. And, and not to, you know, reiterate too much, but this is a school district program.
Correct.
And we are simply contributing.
Yes.
But the, the side that I think is a plus for Mechanicsburg is that the majority of the kids come to Mechanicsburg for these programs.
Yeah.
They're not doing, they, they don't go to Upper Allen. They come here because we have trees, our park's cool, the pool is there. So, we have parents coming in and out, who base up at little businesses and so forth.
Yeah.
So, it helps the whole town a little bit.
Yes. It also adds weight to our facilities by.
It does. It does, but we go buy our parks and they're being used, which is what they're, which is what they're for.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the fiscal side of it really more than anything. And we're going to have a three percent increase compounded every year. So, it's going to, we just want to make sure we're budgeting for that. Or we're.
Well, over time, you're increasing it.
It would, it would be, it may increase a little bit here and there, but the way that we're looking at the population runs, I don't think it's going to, it's going to be going up that much. Not to, you said three percent compounded?
Yeah, so it's three percent every, so what, what that Act One that they're tying in?
Yeah.
Comes from the state. If you have from my time at the school board, I can tell you that it was in the middle twos then. This year, it's at three. And so, that percentage, they're tying our increase to that number every year. If we have a reduction in the number of children and they therefore reduce our number because of that, and they're going to do that every year, which is not in the agreement, then that could offset part of that increase. But kind of most part, we're going to have a three percent increase every year, or so.
I think that, I've got to specify with Greg what that Act One is. There, there might be a different Act One. We're talking about what year that Act One was, was initiated. Because he specifically said that would be based on the population. That is what they use to determine the population that are in the, in the separate schools from the separate municipalities.
Right. But that's the way they calculate how much that percentage is, that they're allowed to increase taxes. That's what they go with.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, that number is the number that they're going to increase apply every year. And so, every year that I've seen it, it's been, and you can go back and Google it, it's very clear. It's in between two and a half and three this year than three.
So, is it based on that number of increase, or is it based on student population?
So, the, the student population determines our percentage, it appears to me. It determines our percentage of how much we're paying of the none. And that, that number, that percentage is tied to, that, that three percent is tied to that. So, we'll increase, if we're twenty-five thousand this year, whatever three percent of that is, it'll go up. But if they adjust the number of children, our, our flat number should go down. But I don't, I don't see that it says that in here. I know it says it was.
I think that, I think that's the intent, but I agree with you. It doesn't spell that out.
The term of the con, the term of the agreement is, is only a year, right? It's not.
Right. You have the one-year agreement.
The one-year agreement.
Right. You're not going to want to renegotiate it every year, right?
No, you couldn't renegotiate that.
Like, or.
And if you're going to renegotiate that, that has to be October thirty-first of the prior year.
Yeah.
So, that's the window there. After that, it automatically removes another year.
Yeah.
Under page seven for determination notice. So, if that's a particular, then you probably want to back that up from the thirty-first. Have that as a dialogue and clarification with that Act, Act One looks like prospectively, the planning process.
Yeah, so Roger, if you don't mind, you know, just to satisfy Mr. Anthony's request, if you could just check with Greg on that.
I will, I will.
I'll probably do that and, and, you know, whether that percentage is, is indeed going to be added each year. That, that will matter.
Nope.
Okay.
All right.
So, we do have a motion and a second. I, at this point, I can't remember who did it, but I think Mrs. Martin will have that listed. So, unless I hear other discussion, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear negative response, I will report the vote unanimous.
And the motion carries. The, the rule is accepted. Next item, please. Discussion possible action to advertise the anti-nepotism ordinance using option two. Option two. Okay, do you have a motion? Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. A second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
I don't think you really need an ordinance. I think we can handle this through a, in a, in a, in a, I don't think you need to do an, an ordinance. I guess going a little bit further, we spend money to advertise for an ordinance. We don't need to.
Well, I just, I want to echo President Miller's comments about the last meeting that I really, I thought the debate was great, very productive, and it was nice to have a civil debate on the topic and, and exchange of ideas. I think that's great. And I just want to expand on that a little bit and urge the council to vote to advertise tonight the anti-nepotism ordinance, because this council unanimously voted on September fifteenth to draft this policy in ordinance fashion. And the solicitor at the last meeting recommended that policy of this type be adopted as an ordinance. And she was directed to draft the ordinance in coordination with the labor attorney. And truthfully, clarification, it does not ban the hiring of relatives. It just has to do with management of a relative. So, it would ban, it would, it has to do with whether there would be a conflict of interest where one relative manages another in the hiring process, that it was a relationship in the hiring process. So, we're not, this option two that we're considering does not, is not a copyright statement. So, it's not to say that a relative of a person couldn't work here. It's just that it deals with the management, particularly with all that relationship. So, the other thing is this policy, this ordinance, in the interstate ethics laws, and provides clarity to prospective employees, and is a public statement of our values. And that's why I think it's most importantly, why it should be an ordinance, is that it's a public statement of our values and leading the borough into this century. So, that, that is why I think it should be the ordinance. Although, perhaps my good name suggests it should be a, in the personnel policy, but I believe it should be ordinance because it would fairly apply to all borough personnel. If it's merely a, in the personnel policy, I don't believe, and having spoken with the labor attorney, it would not apply to the uniform personnel, being a borough personnel policy. So, that's another factor to consider. I think it would be, it's fair when it is an ordinance and it applies to everyone equally. We have other ordinances, we have other policies that are ordinances, and they apply to everyone equally. And it is more reasonable that we adopt this or we advertise this for consideration tonight because this council asked for it to be, drafted as ordinance, and that vote was unanimous. And we spent time and money on the trust center to do that. And if we, if we don't get this group, we'll be going backwards and hiring or, um, the labor attorney possibly drafts up in addition to the personnel policy. So, I think this will certainly be an ordinance versus spending additional funds because something that achieves the single goal where this goes further and is better quit to deal with the issues that this policy is set out to do. So, in my opinion, it should be, it should be an ordinance, and I, I strongly urge your, your board to advertise the ordinance. And I believe it's common sense, and it's just good, just to.
Have we, have we checked with any, any of your resources, probably, to see if they have an ordinance in connection with this? Probably not. And my opinion is that they don't, they have it in the personnel policy. They have an ordinance.
I have a border for a moment. You mentioned that the solicitor recommended that we do this. Is that, do you recall that?
Well, she didn't recommend that we do, she recommended that, that it be an ordinance for me. And that's why she drafted it.
I don't, I don't recall that, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Never mind. I was just remembering from the discussion at the last meeting, that's what.
I think there was a discussion between policy and ordinance. They explained the difference between the two, and ultimately said it would be a policy decision of this council, which way they would want. Obviously, an ordinance is an enforceable enactment of legislation, whereas a policy would only apply to current, once you're employed, once you're employed. An ordinance would apply to applicants, as opposed to once, once you're employed.
When, when, if with a personnel policy, they would not apply to applicants at the same time? If they're applying now?
Once you're an employee.
No. Unless you're an agent.
The, the personnel policy would, once, you, once you are employed, then you fall under the, the policy.
Yeah, okay.
And I think to Mr. Miller's point, if, if you are in the hiring process, the ordinance applies. So, you're saying, right. That's the difference. Is there any other discussion?
So, if we, it, because I'm going back and forth with the policy versus the ordinance. If we enacted a policy for borough employees that would not cover a uniform employee? Or is it to be separate?
No, that is not, that's the, the way that personnel policy is written. It covers all borough employees. The police department is governed by the union contract, and they have separate operational policies upstairs. This is, the personnel, the personnel policy is written is, is the employees as a representative of the borough Mechanicsburg. It tells them their conduct, their act. It also allows us, and it expands on some of the union contracts with Act One Fifty-Eight and the police union on disciplinary actions that the borough can take. So, it does apply to all personnel, all employees of the borough Mechanicsburg, including myself and all department heads. So, it's, it's all, it's, it's all encompassing. There are additional benefits, additional regulations that are under that. And this is specifically the paragraph that, that Mr. Miller wrote in the personnel policy that we have now. But this is all borough employees. The personnel policy covers all.
Did Mr. Miller tell you differently?
I understood differently, as well, than how it's supposed to play to you.
Well, that's, this is, when I spoke to him three years ago when we updated the personnel policy, it, the personnel policy and its conduct is, under is, covers all borough employees, including the uniform. Because there's a clause in there that specifically says, this policy covers all borough employees unless it's in conflict with the, the actual labor union contract.
I think telling that's important, that's kind of a sidebar, but it's still about the topic here. It's like, that ordinance wouldn't say that a relative could not be considered for employment at all. It just says they need to be considered for employment based on their individual qualifications. That's not saying that anybody can't ever be hired if they're related to you. It's just like, they must be the most qualified unquestionably. So, I just think that's something that, I mean, should be the moniker.
Yeah, and I think it comes down to, is it policy or ordinance that we want to go? And Kyle, you're, you're going for ordinance because you feel it's more enforceable?
It feels more enforceable to experience, takes care of the situation that, by everybody employed, whether an applicant, whether you're a uniform, whether you're a fellow person, you know, who works there.
And then to Rodney's point, are there other municipalities that have ordinances versus policies? What, what do they do? I'm sorry.
Am I, am I drafting of that and researching that? I can bring that up, but yes, that's what I, I reviewed in multiple different townships and boroughs that within, kind of, the Commonwealth have the anti-nepotism ordinance. And that's what I was directed to, to draft. I, I did review it with, with our labor council as well. So, the council knows that to address any of the concerns with, making sure that we're, we're compliant with any labor issues, potential labor issues for that. But to answer your question, yes, there are boroughs, there are townships, there are cities that have the anti-nepotism ordinance convocation. There's also other municipalities that have it as a, a, a policy within their employment. So, you know, there's one right and one wrong. I think it's, again, a policy decision here, but I do feel like it is in which was what, what, um, direction.
Who enforces the ordinance versus the policy? Like, is that an oversight when we're talking about if this is an ordinance? Who enforces it? Do you still enforce it? Both.
Both, enforce both of them.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not sure what, what scheme has found out about who has orders as in, as policies, but I believe you will find that there's more policies than are alternatives against that. And I, I've not verified that myself.
Anyone else? No, no other discussion?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote unanimous.
No. No.
Can we have a, a roll call now?
Yeah, that's a great, great idea. Okay. Councilman Agerson. One more point of clarification before, I'm sorry, I need to get me in. So, as far as cost, so if we're looking at advertising versus updating a policy, is there a huge cost savings? Do we have numbers? What would the cost be to add this to the publication advertisement versus doing a policy update?
We're doing a policy update to begin with. So, this would not be a, a major cost problem. I would take the ordinance the way it's written, draft it into the policy changes. It's been three years, it's been almost four years since we've updated the personnel policy. It needs to be refreshed. So, we're going to be doing that at the beginning of next year. Then it's going to come to council for their approval. But I'll be sending it over to the labor attorney for his review. So, it'll all be added into the, if, if council chooses to go that route, we can add it into the, the current policy before we send it over to the labor attorney for review. If you advertise it, you have to advertise it. It's, one, you're asking, especially remembering on the cost of advertising.
It depends on the length of the advertising.
Yeah.
Okay, by the word. You know, so most of our advertisements for ordinances are maybe like a hundred and twenty bucks.
To be fair, this is, we're bringing this up because we didn't have one, and it wasn't in a personnel policy. And this method just clearly applies to everybody. It's not that expensive to do. And, you know, if we incurred more attorney hours, that adds to the cost.
Then you would have the attorney time with either choice because, you know, the attorney would review either that.
I believe we've called for the question, so we will move forward with that.
And this is just on advertising, is that correct? Did I hear?
Yes.
Just to advertise.
Okay. Councilwoman Agerson.
We were roll call voting on this, that way.
You guys got ended off of that? Uh, sure. Councilwoman Whitcomb.
Pete, Pete Dardenly?
Yeah.
No.
President Weber?
No.
Councilman Bellman?
No.
Councilman Booker?
Yes.
Councilman Anthony?
Yes.
Did I, I'm so sorry, I missed you, Councilman.
Perhaps it's just.
And Councilwoman Agerson.
No, this is pinky line.
The pressure is harder now. I know, right, guys, I'm done. I'm going to abstain, we, so.
Can I? But you, you can't abstain from, it's a kind of plain natural.
So, I have to make a decision.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to vote no. Most of it.
So the motion does not pass?
No, it does not.
So we will not be advertising. We will. Moving forward with that at a later time, I believe. The discussion of possibly putting it in the policy manual with the labor attorney.
I can drive something off.
Yes, we're looking for that, that's for sure.
Yep.
Absolutely. All right, so with council's basis, should we allow the manager, you can go ahead with that? Put it in the policy to?
We said it was going to do.
Yeah, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Yep.
We got it. Thank you very much. Anything else? You have one more?
Yeah, I have one more. Discussion possible action with regret to accept the resignation of Solicitor Lisa Korn, effective December thirty first.
Thank you.
Make the motion with regret.
Second.
With regret.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote unanimous.
And regretfully, the motion passes. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Hearing none, any other business?
Nothing.
Uh, you have, in front of you, the draft of the twenty twenty-one budget for all funds.
Yes, no capital, no full.
No capital, no full. Uh, we're still working on that. Uh, I was kind of waiting on the, on the fourth stop tonight. The council passed it so that I could get that put in there. Um, so that'll be in, that'll be ready for the first, uh, ordinance finance and administration meeting that we have coming up. Uh, but there's one thing in here that you'll notice is cross off. I won't talk about that. It's under, under the executive session with matter of personnel. That's all I have, sir.
Any other business?
No, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
Mr. Anthony?
Just a correction to the agenda at the bottom where it says, uh, Borough Council Committee Meeting Finance Committee start. So we all have a one on the twenty-sixth, six thirty. The one, uh, the second is starting at five thirty, not five o'clock, for those of you who would like to join us.
Thank you. Anyone else, just, sir?
Thank you.
Councilman? No.
Okay.
Nice.
Um, there is a mask for Mechanicsburg campaign going on, so I'm challenging all my council persons to take a mask in Mechanicsburg selfie in Mechanicsburg and post it on Facebook to, um, and link it to the downtown partnership, just showing our support for mask-wearing in our small businesses. If you don't approve it, I'll publicly shame you next time.
Should we, uh, I believe.
Should we take a picture while we're up here with a mask?
I think that would be really nice. If someone could do that, we could ask Sarah to take our picture. That would be great.
Could we take a frame out of the
Yes.
video and just? I just spent two frames. Two grainy, two for you. I don't know if anybody is. So what kind of, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing.
All right, I'm, uh, at this point going to announce that we will be adjourning to an executive session on a matter of personnel with possible action. Do you have any other comments? We are adjourning to an executive session.